It's six thirty PM and I'm gonna first call to order our June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two Borough Council Work Session Meeting. We're actually gonna start with a couple of public hearings first. Um, our first public hearing is proposed new economic development restaurant liquor license at sixteen East Gay Street. And at this point, I'll, I'll turn it over to, uh, Tom Esti, Mr. Esti.
To consider the application of White Cow LLC. White Cow's requesting Borough Council approval of an economic development restaurant liquor license proposed to be used at a new restaurant to be located at sixteen East Gay Street in the borough. Just by way of background, Borough Council approval is required prior to the submission of an economic development license application to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. And that's the purpose of this hearing, to, to attempt to get your approval. The YLCB is permitted to grant economic development licenses without regard to the license quota of restrictions in the liquor code. You have the authority to approve the request. If you find the license would promote local economic development, you can also deny the request if you find it doesn't promote economic development or wouldn't have promoted, or the request would adversely affect the welfare, health, peace, and morals of the borough or its residents. Council decision must be in the form of an ordinance or resolution made within forty-five days of the request or during an extended period of an additional sixty days. If council approves the request, the applicant can file an application with the LCB. Uh, I have several exhibits to make part of the record. Borough Council one is the application dated May third, twenty twenty-two. Borough Council two is a proof of publication of notice of the hearing. Council three is verification of posting of the notice. Council four is verification of mailing of the notice. Borough five are schematic plans submitted by the applicant of the proposed restaurant. And Borough six is a sample of menu. So the procedure briefly is the applicant will have an opportunity to present evidence to council. Council and council of administration can ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. If there are any residents and taxpayers present who want to ask questions, they can do that. And then residents and taxpayers may present comments and recommendations regarding the application. I just wanted to say also that the hearing is being stenographically recorded by a professional court reporter, so it's important that only one individual speak at a time and you speak clearly and loudly enough. We will ask you to come to the podium to speak. If members of the public wish to ask questions or make statements, we ask that you identify yourself by name and address each time you speak. At the conclusion of the presentation this evening, the hearing will likely be continued to the council meeting on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. At that time, council may hear additional evidence or consider a resolution to decide the application. The applicant is represented by William Shuen Esquire, who's present this evening somewhere. Oh, there he is. And unless there are any other questions or comments, we can turn the hearing over to Mr. Shuen.
I'm William Shuen. I represent the applicant here, White Cow LLC. And I have beside me Ms. Ann Kolnick. She's the sole member of White Cow LLC. White Cow LLC is an entity that signed a lease for Target premises, sixteen East Gay Street. Some of them mainly classic diner. It's the sidebar in Tecca. There's a small building right next to the parking lot. So, ask Ms. Kolnick a few questions for the record. Put the testimony on, so you get a little understanding of what we need. Questions back. So the first question I ask is, do you want to swear, Ms. Kolnick?
Ann Kolnick. K-O-L-E-N-I-C-K. It'll be A-N-N.
And stated your name. Sole member of the applicant's seat, correct?
Yes.
Asking the borough to issue a resolution which would allow us then to apply for an economic development or restaurant liquor license, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Explain why we need it. Wanna talk very yourself. Go to school post-high school?
Yes, I went to University of South Carolina for, uh, with a bachelor's in hotel restaurant tourism management. Um, then I went to the restaurant school in Philadelphia for pastry arts.
Okay, so you have a degree in restaurant management?
Yes.
And then you got another issue certificate specifically in pastry arts?
Yes.
Okay. After school, did you work in the restaurant business at all?
Yes.
Okay. How many years, are you in the restaurant business right now?
Yes.
And how many years have you been in the restaurant?
Uh, about seventeen years.
Seventeen years. Seventeen years.
Back. Yes.
Okay. So over those seventeen years, were you?
Yes, two.
Two years or two restaurants?
Two restaurants.
Okay. Years did you? Seventeen?
Uh, about fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. And restaurant, right now in Chester County, don't?
Yes, the Gables, the Gables and Chasford.
Okay, and is that all, that's in Chester County?
That's in Chester County. Yes.
Does that restaurant have a liquor license?
It does, yes.
That restaurant?
About eleven years.
And it's had a liquor license for the entire eleven years?
The entire time, yes.
Operation or management of restaurants the past eleven years? Received an LCB citation of any kind? Received a warning? Staff was called ramp certified?
Yes.
And that's responsible alcohol manager? And regulations including those regarding drinking and spotting visibly intoxicated people?
Yes.
Okay. Citation of any? About the restaurant before that?
That was in North Carolina. Liquor license there as well and no citation.
No citation?
Yeah.
On Mr. Record of op- toxins, no citation?
Yeah.
Do you ever have a police issue at?
No.
Famers complained about? Experiences there? Sure you wanna open a restaurant right at the sixteen East Gay Street, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And submitted in that? Let's briefly talk about that. Days do you wanna be?
We'd like to be open seven days a week.
Sunday through Saturday?
Sunday through Saturday and probably brunch on the weekends, but then just lunch and dinner, uh, during the week.
Okay, so what time will you?
Between ten and eleven AM.
And a lot of the stats we're giving you restaurants offer too, these, these can be tweaked later on depending on what works, just so council knows subject to move some of these timelines and menu prices, et cetera.
Sure, of course.
Submitted? Are you gonna have any entertainment?
Think so. Probably just music over like, you know, the sound system.
Like a P A system?
Yeah.
And if you have live entertainment, it's to be like acoustical, soft?
Yeah.
Submitted? Council has? Shows a first floor, second page, it says the second and third. His plans?
Yes.
Okay. Seating capacity. It's, it's gonna be about, say about two hundred and ten to two hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Okay. Each floor has a small bar? Are about?
Yes, on each floor.
Remaining of the restaurant is the remainder?
Diners, yeah. Sure, sorry.
Me? Okay, sorry. You want me to repeat anything? Um, okay, sorry. Do you want me to repeat anything?
Of course.
Okay, yep, I'll go over that again. So based on the schematics, which is the plans that we submitted, um, we're projecting about between two hundred and ten and two hundred and forty people, correct?
Yes.
Um, obviously, it's gonna be limited by the fire code capacity, though, if that comes in under that. But that's what the architect told us, we could probably do that.
Yes, yep, that's correct.
And again, uh, at the bar area, about thirty to thirty-five people, the little bar areas?
Yes.
And the rest is the one oh eight, one eighty to two oh five, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, tell me type of restaurant this is going to be?
Yes, we're thinking, um, I was thinking kinda Spanish tapas, Mediterranean, um, kinda like small plates, um.
Too heavy?
Nothing too heavy, nice and light, um.
So when we worked on this application together, we said forum to table, comma, upscale casual healthy tapas. Is that a pretty accurate description?
Yeah.
Okay. And approximately what's your meal price range, meaning per ticket item, not per, per seat?
Um, per ticket item?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll range between twelve and twenty dollars.
Okay, and that's, that's subject to fluctuation. We know food prices.
Yes, yeah.
I made a glaring error in this application. Subsection I, five employees, that dash, this is gonna be thirty, but how many employees are you approximately?
Probably like thirty to forty.
Thirty to forty. That hyphen in the middle of three to five was an error to grammatically. So it's not only three, five employees, this is a three-story restaurant. It's gonna be about thirty, thirty restaurants.
That'd be interesting.
And when we were researching for this?
Yes.
You on your own and we made a couple of stops, um, what were some of the restaurants in the area that you kind of wanna model it after?
Yeah, so like terrain, we love terrain. I like, you know, we really wanted to put a lot of, um, you know, plants, make it really nice and airy.
Terrain and Glen Mills.
Terrain and Glen Mills, like Savanna Bistro, um, kind of along those lines.
So that kind of feel kind of little bit earthy?
Earthy, like lots of, um, use lots of local farms and whatever local ingredients we can get.
And you plan on having like a seasonal menu too? Do we talk about that, like based on?
Yeah, so the menu will change, you know, usually with four times a year or two times a year.
Written, you told you there's any kind of a test or an objection to you getting this, this type of license?
No.
See support from people?
Yes.
Okay. Time to this operation?
Yes.
Did we, did you and I make an effort to acquire what I will call a regular liquor license?
Yes, we did.
And for council's purposes, a regular liquor license is what they call standard all-star liquor license. It's more of an asset than this is. This is not an asset. This is a non-transferable license. It's more like a driver's license. And a regular R liquor license, like you see in a lot of restaurants, is an asset that they buy and sell and it can appreciate, et cetera. Effort to obtain one of those in council, right?
Yes, we did.
And we wrote, do you know approximately how many letters we sent out?
Gosh, a lot.
Over two hundred, right?
Over two hundred, yes.
Did anyone in town write us back at all?
Uh, not in town, no.
Um, did we get any letters from people outside of town?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you remember the price ranges that they were looking for?
Oh.
Four or five hundred, correct?
Yeah.
If they would sell, right?
Yes, just nothing panned out.
And I explained to you, if we put one of those under contract to come in front of council and get approval regardless, because we can't just bring one into town that's outside of town without council's approval, correct?
Yes.
What, did I ask you this already and I apologize, what percentage of your sales projecting will be alcohol?
Probably about thirty percent, twenty-five to thirty percent, some majority food.
Okay. Apparently the alcohol's there to complement and supplement the food sales?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Um, could you run this operation without a liquor license?
No, no, it's just not feasible, you know, with the, the food prices and the margins to not be able to have that, the alcohol to bring that revenue. It'd be difficult.
So based on your costs and what you're projecting, you, you need that thirty percent to cover?
Absolutely, yes.
This time, but council, anybody that wants to ask about either the process, about this applicant?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. We mentioned you went through the process to, to get a regular liquor license and you'd mentioned the prices for that. So it sounds like this was a more affordable option.
Yes.
Obviously. So in terms of an, being an economic development license, the way I understand those licenses is that they are granted to businesses that are going to bring economic development to a specific municipality, town, whatever. Do you think that Westchester is in need of that? Either of you, I guess.
I, I do, and I think this is very important. Speaking of my own experience, I remember years ago, I was in front of Borough to get approved, Spruce Cafe, which I believe they're doing. That one approved for Spruce, and then years later, I went back and we got it was called iPasta, named for some reason on Black, changed their name.
Dolce Zola.
Dolce Zola, that's exactly right. Both running fabulously, never any issues with the process then. Difference here is Ann will be the first female-owned restaurant that exists in town. All the other restaurants at least have some she'll be the only, literally the only and the sole female-owned restaurant in town. And I think that, that is a sign of economic opening doors to women like Ann who are leaders in their community, who is a single mother. So I think just that alone, opening those doors, I think that's a plus for economic.
Okay, um, the, the other question I had before I, everybody else can ask, is, um, do you plan on having outdoor seating and then also thinking about the gay street closure, which is, which you, as you know, is happening? Um, many restaurants have chose to apply to have seating in the street as well. Do you plan on either of those things?
Plan on doing that in the beginning, maybe down the road, eventually looking into that.
That's not part of the, just as council, be clear with council, that's not part of our, what we're requesting or in the plans right now.
And to be clear, and maybe this is a, a question for Mr. Esti, but if you did want to pursue that, would this happen? Would you have to come back before council? Would that be as simple as applying for a, a platform license or whatever patio license we normally do?
Right now, yes. Two, two processes. They have to go back to the LCB to ask for an outdoor licensed premises. And they'd also have to come to the borough, perhaps, perhaps not council, but to get the platform or the outdoor dining approval. Now, historically, when these licenses have been approved, we enter into agreements with the licensee and that agreement typically prohibits outdoor service unless later approved council.
Thank you.
Mr. Esti, the, the questions I'm allowed to ask, what, uh, is there a range on them? Or does it have to be specifically about the liquor license?
No, you can ask questions about the operation, what, what the applicant proposes to do. Now, there are certain requirements that are before the, the LCB, but you could still ask questions about that. For example, and Mr. Shuen alluded to this, the applicant has to prove to the LCB, and I'm paraphrasing, that they made reasonable attempts to obtain a quote "regular" license. Uh, so there, there are a whole set of criteria that the LCB requires, which are distinct from your decision on whether it promotes economic development or is contrary to the health, safety, or welfare of the borough.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. I'm gonna give you a full disclosure. My family is the Classic Diner. And my family also is Savanna Bistro. So I come from the restaurant business, so, uh, pretty much know very well when you bought the Gables from Mr. McFadden and moved on. So it's a very close-knit family, the restaurant business. Uh, the building that you're looking to use, I know every corner and every dust ball in that building. Okay, because it was my job to maintain the maintenance there, uh, for my daughter Chrissy. The, uh, I noticed that you're going to be putting a third floor on the building. Uh, did you ask the, the, uh, building and housing department whether your, your, the building is capable of holding the third floor?
Uh, we haven't really gotten that far.
That's okay, I'm just, uh, 'cause I know the building very well.
Yeah.
Uh, when Tony Suma rebuilt the building, he did an excellent job.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'm not so sure that, whether the third floor will hold the third floor.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my only question. The, uh, the-
Look, we wanna make the third floor, if we can, obviously, like a big glass enclosure, so very like-
Yeah, I, I, from the, from the floor plan, you know, you're becoming very aggressive from, you know, the seating arrangements. Uh, we were only permitted Classic Diner to have forty-five people in the first floor and second floor because the way it was laid out.
Yeah.
And you're looking at putting two hundred and forty people, two hundred and ten people, uh, including the third floor if it's approved. So, um, the fire, as you mentioned, Mr. Shuen, the fire marshal's gonna probably have a lot to say about
That trumps everything.
How, how many people you could put in there. Uh, Mr. Perron made us take out the row of center tables that you have here because people were eating off other people's dishes.
Yeah.
So it's a very narrow building. Uh, uh, I'm glad you're there.
Yeah.
I mean, we-
You know, if we, planning on moving the stairs, um, to the back?
Right.
Create more space?
Yeah.
To be quite so crowded?
Yeah, I saw that, the, uh-
Back to the back and out from the, you know, where the side of it is.
Mm-hmm. The, uh, the, the only, the only, uh, other, the, the third floor has me puzzled, has me actually scared. Um, because, uh, the outside wall next to the parking lot, uh, sheds a lot of dust and dirt, uh, from the stones.
Yeah.
So be careful there.
Yes.
Um, and the, uh, uh, the, the amount of people that you're gonna be putting in this building, uh, I'm not personally, unless you have wide open floor plan, I'm a little skeptical about the, the amount of people you're gonna put in there. And, uh, Mr. Stefano covered the economic, uh, liquor license and, and, uh, you know, uh, wish you well.
As you know, the plans and the size and the capacity and the structure itself, it's whatever the engineers and ultimately building and housing approves us to build in the way they approve us to build it. So we are limited-
Yeah.
Fire code, building and housing, engineers say if we need an extra beam to hold that or this or that. Again, that's all up, that's up to them, but it will be, the only thing we could tell you, it's built, however it's built out finally, built according to code, highest safety standards. Whatever the fire marshal says is, are at max capacity. When we're done with that, we're absolutely limited to that. This is just projections based on our architect.
Thank you. Um, uh, so I guess along the economic development lines, you, you mentioned thirty to forty employees. Can you give me the breakdown of full-time, what, what wages would look like, et cetera?
Sure, I mean, there'll be, um, uh, full-time cooks, chefs in the kitchen, um, servers can be, you know, a mix of full-time and part-time to kind of fill in all the spots. Um, bartenders, busters, dishwashers, um, range of what they get paid? Is that what you asked? Yeah, so anywhere, you know, right now, it's, it's changing. We pay hostesses, I think thirteen dollars is the lowest rate we really have. So thirteen dollars an hour up to, you know, twenty-five, thirty dollars an hour depending on, you know, what their job position is. Managed, yeah, managers more, you know, managers probably have a salary of, you know, seventy. No, I would, I'd say probably like seventy-five percent of the staff's full-time and then like twenty-five percent, you know, part-time that-
I could just tell you. Most restaurants in town can't slip thirteen. Prices for everything, but people are, you know, some businesses are complaining they don't have. It's a, it's a good time?
I'm relatively new up here. And I, I'm not sure who to ask this to, but I've been warned repeatedly that if I approve this, which from everything I'm hearing, I, I absolutely want to, um, I will open the floodgates and everyone who asks for a liquor license will, I will be required to grant it. Can someone respond to that?
I mean, I could give, I mean, it's a mystery.
Person, I, 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 this does not set any kind of precedent because you may decide to approve this. It doesn't mean you have to approve every application. Every application is somewhat distinct. The one thing that's somewhat distinctive about this application, and Mr. Shuen also mentioned this, this license is not transferable to anywhere else in the borough or to any other individual or entity. It has to stay at this place with this applicant. So it's not like a regular restaurant license. So it's my view that it, it, you could approve this and you could decide not to approve a future license. There are all different premises, all different kinds of operations. That's not a concern.
Thank you.
To, let's be brief, uh, to Sheila's point, there is gonna be some skepticism for that exact reason, right? You know, that could open the floodgates, it could allow people to deter and go around getting a liquor license, and especially in Westchester. Westchester is a happening area. To me, when I look at the liquor or the approval for this license, I do have a lot of questions. Usually, that these licenses are normally approved in, I believe, Keystone Opportunity Zones, is that?
Opportunity to obtain a special license. This license falls under the same categorical space in the liquor code.
Correct, okay, thank you. And, and with that, you made mention that, uh, that you went through and, and tried to obtain liquor license the traditional way, roughly about four hundred, five hundred thousand, you mentioned. Could you provide us with a list of people that, to council, and I think that, that would be helpful for us, of people that you reached out to and that rejected that offer?
So this is a stack of every person. This is an exhibit. At this stage for the stages Mr. Esti was pointing. In fact, if for some reason our next step would be to that step includes a hearing. It's a lot, it's difficult. A lot of testimony on to obtain a regular license. One of those efforts that we have to put on is who and what responses we receive if it, so they didn't send the letter. I asked them. I'll, I could give you a copy of this, each letter I sent, or I could give you.
You could put that together in an exhibit?
Okay.
And present it at the next hearing, that would make, and if you'd like some explanatory material
Okay.
covering that, I think that would help council.
I, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Send them to every licenser. Give us a rejection. I didn't say no. Respond. Saying let me, saying selling license, I have a responses. None of them were. None of them were... Put this as an exhibit, July 19.
Follow-up to that, the three responses, did they say that they would be willing to sell, negotiate? What was the context of those responses?
Two of them specifically said, we'll sell our license for the right price, on the market, so to speak. It's not really a mystery. It's something that's a mystery, another license. So you have a license, I'll sell it for you if you give... Nope. So I called a few of them too, and wrote... I didn't get direct responses, and didn't do that, say, yeah, I got something for you. Because they really don't. What they do then, they call people and say, I could sell your license for... So they didn't really have any in safekeeping, which is what you put along since you're not... But they said they were going to, for them, I still haven't heard back. It's been a couple months. It's tricky finding licenses in Chester. Sale, expensive. So just to give you a little step, when we have to explain why we didn't... This has to be like, what it must be. We have to say, okay, we found three licenses, they were... Front of the LCB, we put on questions to banks that were denied. Bank accounts showing we don't have $500,000. So would submit testimony, so far, extra... Doesn't make sense, even if we could make that payment. So that next step, that's a big part of the next step, is showing the LCB doesn't want issues. Saying they're white... Showing, yeah, they made reasonable effort to obtain, to find a regular license, the
What was, what would be the price range then that you would look for in that liquor license, that you would be able to obtain that and run your business successfully?
Mr. Schuen, could you kindly, we have a person from council, on council who can't be here, and the only way she can hear what you're saying is if you project your voice into the microphone. You can hear yourself in the room echo a little bit, when you know you're being picked up.
I apologize.
Counsel, what the price of the ED license is?
Yeah, so to apply for an economic development license, you pay a $50,000 application fee, or one of the fees is $50,000, and it's a $1,200 license, no, I got them backwards. It's a $50,000 licensing fee and a $1,200 application fee. If you apply and get rejected, they give you the $50,000 back, but they keep the $1,200. But if you get approved, they keep both of them. Each year, they have to be renewed. And again, to give you a little more information on the economic development license, they're really designed for restaurants that have liquor sales, not for bars. So you have to do, at least half of your sales or greater have to be of non-alcoholic beverages or food. So you can't have the type of place that's kicking out 50-cent beers and running that kind of operation. It's really designed for restaurants.
License requires that. In other words, it has to be, and they change it. I think it's now, it used to be 70%, but now it's 50% of the gross sales has to be food and non-alcoholic beverages, and that's on an annual basis.
Can I just ask, if you were to move into Westchester and become part of our neighborhood, how involved would you be with the bid and activities that we're trying to set up where we're having Wednesday nights, where it's a tap, and you come out, it's a happy hour, that the whole community is a part of? Things like shutting down gay street, these things matter to us, and I want to know if you're interested in participating, how willing you're going to be, how...
Oh, absolutely.
On board?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then, do you have any experience with college kids? It doesn't sound like this is going to be a college.
You're definitely not planning on having it. The Gables is, you know, of scale. You know, the really, again, the entrees are really going to be affordable, but not cheap for college kids, and same with like the cocktails. They're going to be nice, like craft cocktails, not like cheap beer. So cocktails for $12 to $18, you know, so I think it'll attract a little more sophisticated, older, responsible people.
And being part of the Borough, there are a lot of activities and events, and I would love any restaurants or businesses moving in to be open and willing to participate in things, contribute to everything. We had the Westchester Friends students come and ask if businesses would have a drinking station for just passersby to stop by and get a bottle of water, things like that, where you're really showing goodwill towards the community.
I'm open to all of that, yeah. Because all of that is, you know, I want to help the community, but then that's also, you know, sometimes kind of advertising.
Good for you.
Yes, so, but it's all, you know, it's good for everybody. I'm always happy to, you know, do anything along those lines.
Thank you.
Of course, yes. Yeah, I've learned that at the Gables, that that really pays off and makes a big difference.
So, three questions. Is this an anticipated menu, or is this the extent of your menu?
Just, just kind of a sample menu, something along those lines. The menu would probably be a little bit bigger, but like small plates like that, you know, cheeses, meats, and then some small little entrees, some nice salads. Again, I think we would make the menu probably a little bit bigger. This is just kind of a little sampling.
Yeah, because it seems awfully small. Secondly, you say you're modeling yourself after terrain, but terrain is a, you know, it's a BYOB.
The one in Glen Mills is, the one in Devon is, they have a liquor license.
You specifically mentioned Glen Mills.
Okay, that's just, it's closer to me, but I've been to both, to Devon. I think more about like the decor, you know, the, all the beautiful plants and really like open, airy, and their food is very, you know, farm-to-table, along those lines, fresh ingredients.
And so where will you be working then primarily? Gables? Gables is a big establishment.
We're like, sorry.
Where will you primarily be working? Gables is a very big establishment in and of itself, so...
Sure. No, I have some really good managers, also my sister, who, she's got a culinary degree from Drexel, and she works there and, you know, is taking over a lot of that. I would be here, you know, working in this restaurant, operating the Gables.
And then one other question, and perhaps this is for you. So you're an LLC, so you've mentioned that this type of license stays with the building or the entity. So now, how about if you close this LLC and start up another one in the same location? Does that license then become transferable or not?
No, this is a non-transferable license. It, if...
If she's the same, if the owner is the same?
Doesn't matter. It's, even if she owns both two LLCs and they're next door to each other, she can't move the license next door. Even if she bought the building next door and wanted to close this operation and open here, non-transferable, even if it's the same owner. Person to person or place to place, these are non-transferable. Again, they wanted them to be more like a driver's, like nothing, not like an asset that you use. It's supposed to be something that helps a restaurant only, it helps a community. So now they're non-transferable. And I've had a client that moved in Downingtown from one end to a shopping center to another, same general address. They made us go through the LCB, we had to go through this entire process again in Downingtown. When he shut this one down, we had to come up, get another resolution, file another application just to open at the other end of the shopping center, which is Leonie's Pizza, some of you may know, in Downingtown, but now, non-transferable, even if the same owner.
And so you have a license in Chad's Ford, was that also economic development?
No. No, we purchased the restaurant from Jack and Pat, and we purchased the license.
Okay.
That was already there.
Okay. And so...
There's no liquor license with the building that we bought.
So there's no economic hardship, as I see it? You just want to do something that's more expeditious?
Wait, I'm sorry, what was that?
So I'm wondering, why this route, this particular time? Why this route to purchase a license this particular time when you didn't do this in Chad's Ford or at your previous restaurant?
I understand. Okay. This is why I had asked her about the, could the operation operate without this liquor license? The answer is no. Obviously, the Gables is a much, much bigger operation, that can seat hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people and do the kind of quantity you need to do to pay what we call the nut on a liquor license loan. So if you were able to get the money, Ms. Colwell will testify she doesn't have the money in her banking. We're going to have to show the LCB that. Can't have the money and just say, I'm choosing not to spend. To, for a smaller operation like this, when you crunch the numbers, the, making a payment $2,000, $3,000 a month on a $400, $500,000 liquor license, even if there were one for sale, let's say hypothetically in town, that doesn't make sense almost on this size operation. This is why generally see this, a lot of smaller restaurants try to apply for this type of a license, because the cost isn't feasible for the restaurant owner.
Mr. McCoy, again.
One last question, and I'm not sure if you know the answer to this, but the $50,000 fee for the, to the Liquor Control Board, do you know what that's used for? Is that, does it go into the PA Treasury, or does it get used somehow for economic development statewide?
I could try to look it up, that's what I was asking.
Reduce our taxes.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Flynn.
I only have one more follow-up question for you. The White Cow LLC, who are the participating members of the LLC?
Just you.
Just you? Okay, thank you.
If there's no more questions from council or the mayor, would it be appropriate to open up for public comment at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Let's do that. Anybody from the... Darrell, come on down. You can, yeah, you can stand off to the side if you like, I'm sure the question will be for you, but it'll be quick.
Dee Cook, 506 South Hornet Street, Westchester. What are the hours of the operation going to be, and will the bar close when the kitchen closes?
Hours will be 10:00 AM to around 11:00 PM, and the bar may stay open an hour or so after the kitchen closes, but again, not late, we don't anticipate being open late past 11:00, 11:30.
Let me ask a follow-up question. If council were to approve this, and one of the conditions was that you always have some sort of food available for patrons while you're serving alcohol, would you...
Absolutely, yes, I understand that, yep.
Anybody else in the public wish to speak?
As you mentioned at the outset, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to continue the hearing until July 19th at 6:30 PM.
So moved. Second.
Okay, that motion to continue this till July 19th at 6:30 was made and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Okay. Mr. Metric, you call that question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey is joining us telephonically. Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
That's a majority.
Okay.
Before we stop this evening, as I mentioned at the outset, the council intends to invoke the 60-day extension under the liquor code, and I presume you have no objection to that?
No objection at all.
Okay, and I'll, just to confirm that, or an email.
If you, whatever you want to do, no objection to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That, thank you very much. That being said, that we're going to close that hearing.